Well, maybe that could go in the other use box with drive through.
Junk and salvage and just no's. I'm sure, I can't imagine you had many of those come up, but.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing is to add another row here.
No, it'll go after the accessory uses.
You're, you're in the right spot, Dan.
Yeah, maybe the best thing to do would be to put junk or salvage in the industrial district thing.
Whether it would be primary or other, it would be excluded.
Yeah, okay. In the accessory uses, these are, some of these are new categories, family daycare, wired for small. The statute provides for family daycare, which is up to, this is all done out of a house. So it's six children, including resident participants. At large is 10 children, including resident participants. And the, the statute says if you don't regulate it, it's allowed. And my default position recommended has always been to put small as of right and send by special permit. So that's not what it has there. It's just a placeholder. If I was, if I came home from working and told me they were going to be 10 kids next to me for the foreseeable future on a daily basis, I probably want a hearing. I'm not saying no, but I'd want a hearing. I represented a woman in a city that will remain nameless in the fight between the provider and the neighbor. Got so extreme that the provider would send the kids out beneath the kitchen window every day and coach them to scream.
Along those lines, I would encourage the way that it's currently set up where any family daycare, it's not prohibited, but it does require a special permit. So that at a minimum, the butters would get notice. Even if it's a small daycare, the butters will get noticed because there would be an presumably an impact, albeit minor most likely for a small daycare on traffic and otherwise, but depending upon the location, even small traffic could be potentially disruptive, which may or may not impact the way that a special permit is drafted. Because there may be other requirements that need to be handled or signage or other, other elements. Just thinking about how this could be used, it wouldn't prohibit it, but it would at least allow to make sure that the betterment of the town is, is handled.
Is family, is family daycare, so like if that's?
It's either six or 10 capped. A childcare center can be 200 kids.
Yeah.
Using Primrose, their usual model is 100.
Again, there's like family daycare, like is that have to, does it, does definition mean that money has to be exchanged or?
It's licensed.
Licensed, licensed, take care.
The licensed take care.
As is childcare, but, but the 1979 enabling legislation for childcare facilities said we have a really serious shortage. And we got to make some dents in that, but, you know, the throwaway is the small ones. But there are childcare centers or school age programs that only serve 45 kids. But when you get into the big ones, you know, next generation, Primrose is my client. Then they tend to run a model that is 160. 160 is the occupancy, they might design it for 180, but they never fall. So they.
These, these family ones would potentially sunset when the, the resident children got old enough that they didn't need daycare, correct?
They could just take in another off premises kid.
Doesn't it need to have, wouldn't you need to have your own, oh, it doesn't?
Nope, just out of a home.
Just that your kid counts towards the six or the 10.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if you have a two year old, your kid counts.
Okay.
But you don't have to have a kid that qualifies to continue on.
So what you said, Dan, was that you like what I got there because it says special permit.
Correct.
Across the board.
And I see Attorney McGrath raise, raise his hand, let him contribute.
That was by mistake, sorry about that, dropping something on my keyboard.
Oh, fair enough.
Thank you for recognizing.
So the, it's really an odd package of legislation that was produced because if I'm Goddard School or Primrose or Next Generation, unless you've got some dimensional barriers, like I can only have a net floor area or a footprint max of X or Y, I, I have a pretty much the same path as a church or a school to the finish line. And you can't put a special permit in place, you can't say no. And you can impose reasonable bulk requirements.
So because the Dover, the Dover amendment, you can't have a special permit on the larger facilities, but the smaller facilities you can?
That's the oddity.
Gotcha.
Theo, I saw, I saw you raise your hand, are you?
Yeah, you asked the question I was asking, which is, so the Goddard School or anything like that is under D retail services, places of assembly, so that's good to go.
No, it's under institutional uses.
Oh, all right, thank you.
But the, the thought, the thought process is that those ones you can't do special permit because of the Dover, but the smaller ones because they're more situated in residential oriented neighborhoods, that that's why you would argue there's additional protections that would be warranted?
The legislature didn't say that you could not control them by special permit, but the, the opposite. They're allowed by right unless you say something contrary to that in the bylaw. You don't have to allow them at all, as far as I can, as far as I read the enabling legislation. But, you know, you need these just as bad if you want to take the debate to the extreme.
In the, in the other communities where you, you said your default is to allow the small ones by right and the large ones by special permit, so that kind of the in between six and 10 is kind of the sweet zone where you need a special permit, essentially?
Yeah.
Have you found the other towns that have used that as a, as a mechanism, have had any issues or?
Quite a few towns have taken my word for it and they've adopted that as the default. I haven't heard any picking back. I mean, I, for me, it's just simply a matter of what would I want to have at my disposal if you, my, my neighbor announced to me, knock, 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 I'm going to open a, you know, a family daycare center and I'm going to have up to 10 kids. And I'm looking at your backyard going, where are you going to put them? Does that, that play areas?
Right, the, the way that I'm looking at this and the reason why I think that it makes sense, especially even with the small family daycares, is where the, with, with the other changes that we know are in the process of happening, such as the MBTA Communities Overlay that was passed with accessory dwelling uses potentially increasing density, even if it's not overly significant density and with, as we are seeing increased congregate types of housing, apartment buildings and so forth. If someone is running a, wants to run a daycare out of their apartment or other, or other space where they're living, even if it's a small daycare, even if they're only taking in two or three other children, that's something that, again, there may be other pieces of that permit that make sense. And at a minimum, the neighbors should be aware that this is happening because it, it does create not necessarily a risk, but certainly a change of what people are expecting. And even at a small level, the, the request to have a special permit, if this is going to be a business, it's a licensed business, may not, maybe a small business, but just as a, even a home-based business requires a license for, i- if you're going to have a D, a DBA and every business is supposed to file the, file the forms for the, except for the assessor's office and so forth every year, I see this being similar. It's a way for the town to at least have knowledge of what's happening. And if someone is doing this without that, it, there becomes an enforcement mechanism as well. Because if all of a sudden someone says, okay, there's kids next door that are banging on things, it, depending upon what's happening in the area, there may be i- input to, as part of a special permit from various, various public safety and so forth.
But once you create the special permit, it's existing, not, it's existing, allowed, right? I mean, it's not like there's a sunset that you're having renew on any point, like, I mean, Joe, you, you're on the ZBA, like, if someone came and said they're, they're going to create a six, six kid daycare, would you guys ever say no? I mean, is there, or impose any condition?
I don't know, I guess that question. I don't think it's come to us recently, so.
I don't think you have it now.
I, I don't necessarily see a no, but I do see it being very helpful to at least put in knowledge so that public safety is aware if there is a public safety issue in the building or the structure. Those are the types of things that I could see becoming factors in the public hearing process. It's not necessarily about denying a permit, it's about making sure that it's appropriate and done in a way that is conducive to the environment. That's why I would encourage there to be a special permit. I don't see it as being an onerous requirement for someone to do it. People apply for special permits regularly.
There are a few actually on Main Street, if I remember correctly, but it's more of an, you know, marginal component set up like residential.
Right now, you do have family daycare, three SPs. That's MR, another SP, so four SPs, no SP, no, no. That's I think what I have up there.
That's consistent.
It doesn't distinguish between large and small. One of the things that I did not put there is something I've put in with everybody since I got mad at the land court, which is adult daycare. You know, a lot of people have ailing parents at this point. It's not always workable to drop them off at an assisted living facility for daycare. Some people, the person in question was a client of mine 30 years ago. She was a retiring nurse, she worked at the Norwood Hospital. She lived in Canton, she had an old post road kind of house. She wanted to do good and she wanted to take in, you know, 12, 15 people a day. She would, you know, it would be early Alzheimer's, memory loss, you know, dementia or recovering from injury or, you know, something that, somebody that needed care. And should be, they'd be dropped off in the morning and picked up at night, just like a kid. And also assisted living facilities typically do this as a component of their operations because it's a lot of extra money to have people van in or car in during the day and get picked up at night. They're not residents of the facility. But that's a cash cow for assisted living facilities as well. When I took that to the, when I took the woman's Boston Post Road house to the land court, the judge told me that it was not an educational facility, it was a warehouse and I got really pissed off. Because I presented information that even just talking about current events or cooking or, you know, that kind of thing forced stalls the development of dementia, just to stimulate the brain and you wouldn't have it. So I got my revenge by putting it in bylaws over the years. It's just, I would regulate it the same way if you want to have it.
So what you, what I'm hearing you discussing is potentially adding in another row for adult care.
It's a social daycare facility, it's not, it's not meds, it's not, you know, there's nothing like that. It's basically just straightforward.
And I just copied the, the table from the family daycare.
Yeah.
For this. I'm not sure if this is necessarily the right answer, I'm just, it's a starting point.
I think at a minimum, you ought to think about it as something that could be accessory and listed just in the text as accessory to a senior living facility. Particularly in assisted living.
So it comes to mind is some of the activities that we have over at the Senior Center, which would kind of be in this, i- in this type of realm.
Except you're paying a care check. And they're probably getting a meal out of it, you know.
Do we, for eight and nine, do those have to get amended based on the ADU legislation? Should those just be omitted as a?
Just a yes? Yes across the board, not right, not, well, not across the board, but it's allowed by right with single residents and general residents and SSR, right?
Unless we're, unless we, we pass something that actually defines how we want to regulate it.
It's regulated by the state now, though.
Regulate, it's preempted by the state. They're saying that you can't enforce any prohibitions.
So it's a yes, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that the state says any residential district.
What's it? Yes in SR and no who else?
No, I think it's.
But yes across the board?
I think it's yes in any residential.
Single, singles, SSR in general.
Any single family residential zoning district.
Oh, any sing, single family?
It's just the SR.
And SSR.
SSR too.
Yeah.
Which of those three first districts are single family?
The first two.
First two.
It's special, single and single. And the general is two.
Family anyways, right?
Yeah.
Could that be yes anyways? No.
Yeah, I think you probably have.
You probably could, just. It's probably, you, you probably honestly, what it is, it's probably accessory apartment and get rid of it and then you get rid of nine, because it's the same thing.
I would not call it an apartment, I would call it an ADU.
Yeah.
Spell that was accessory dwelling unit?
Although I think there's some other changes that are needed there.
Yeah, I'd have to get a C section 8.1 label on it.
Thanks, Sam.
Sam?
Thank you, through the chair, any single family, any zoning, if there's a component of.
Can't we, unfortunately, we're having trouble hearing you, Sam.
Let me try that again, sorry, still not used to wearing this headset. The, whatever you do for the ADUs, I would try not to get too into the weeds on any components of this because we're going to be working on, on the update for the bylaw. But as a side note, it, it does, yeah, I just, I would just defer to that right now versus getting into any of this and spending more time talking about it tonight.
Anything else on here?
The accessory scientific uses is statutory provision in section nine. And it's back in the accessory use section as well.
You say statutory, what, what specific?
In section nine of the statute, it says ordinances or bylaws may provide for accessory scientific uses. It's pretty, you know, it's kind of like a mad scientist at home thing. Let me go back to the accessory use section. I think I just.
Well, you said that, all I can think of is Marty McFly as an accessory scientific use and wanting to go back to the future.
Got it.
Breaking bad, so. You can go either way.
There's actually a pretty famous case from Kingston. Where a guy was, this is all true. He was investigating whether or not certain mollusks provided a glue that would work in outer space. And the neighbors all thought he was a mad scientist. He also had a house that was too low under the FEMA upgrades. So he was raising his house and he had a kid on a bobcat down there and the kid hit one of the supports and the whole house tilted over, the kid got hurt, they rushed him to the hospital. While he was in the hospital, the building inspector and a couple of other local officials came over and they bulldozed the house. I have a picture of it. And he said, what about my scientific research? And he said.
Apparently it wasn't strong enough to hold the house together.
So the statute says. I just left it to the table. Uses whether or not on the same parcel as activities permitted as of right, accessory to activities permitted as a matter of right, activities are necessary in connection with scientific research may be permitted upon the issuance of a special permit, provide that the special permit granting authority finds the proposed accessory does not substantially derogate from the public, but it's not since section nine.
So can we have the no's in the single residence and special single residence?
With that? With that?
Yeah.
Actually, it's not well written, doesn't, it just says may be permitted upon the issuance of a special. It doesn't mention prohibition. I would think that that's fine what you have there. I don't know of a single case ever, other than that civil trial that resulted, but that didn't test the validity of the bylaw.
I think that's probably everything in this section then.
Correct. Any other feedback on the table of uses before we close this file? Attorney Bobrovsky, is there a need to bring up appendix B, which is the dimensional regulations, were, were there any changes?
Just footnotes that applied to the MR district, of which there were several, have been yanked out as a rest renumber.
So for those who are remote, this is appendix B. So it's footnote number seven?
There are a number of footnotes that are referencing that MR district that got.
Okay.
I think there's other footnotes that were taken out too. Oh, no, I see them, I'll, I'll go over them again, but I think they're there, apologies.
Okay, that brings us.
Are there any other major changes that we want to discuss as a group? And I want to be cautious, we're getting close to 10 o'clock.
The major change, I think, I don't know if we'll get through it tonight, but I added with the bylaw committee a section numbered 6.3. And it's a set of performance standards that apply to special permits and site plan decisions for commercial, non-residential projects. So if you go down to procedure, it applies to any, not stop there, I'll go back a little bit. Okay, that 632 paragraph. It applies to non-residential or multifamily use. Six is the threshold for the mixed use or multifamily use. And the idea is that some things are left unsaid or very subjective in the bylaw, like minimize this or maximize that. You've got, you know, you've got parking standards, they're not subjective, they're objective. You've got lighting standards, I'm sorry, you've got sign standards, more, more sign standards than anybody else in New England in between the overlay district and the general sign provision. So this would add noise, lights. If you scroll down, you can see the standards in the main heading. Site preparation, traffic, utilities. And just provide some basic objective standards for those as well. So as you're exercising your powers under site plan review or special permit, you're, you know, adhering to some concrete standards like you would for science and parking. You can waive any of them by, you know, your decision at the end. There's this, you know, some basic common sense about site development. How do you do it? What do you clear? What don't you clear? What if you, what, what about existing vegetation, limit of clearing, things like that. The next section I think is traffic. Yeah, so this is a fairly precise section that would basically give you the authority on town roads that the state assumes on state numbered highways. So you want to know what they're going to do, you want to know where the driveways and the accessways are, you can require a TIA S in some circumstances, if there's a drop in the level of service, you can impose mitigation. This is all pretty much what comes under the heading of the highway access permit by the regional office of DOT. But you don't have any jurisdiction over state roads, you do only have jurisdiction over local roads. And there's also things in there like traffic demand management, when do you impose it? What's the standard for site distance? What kind of bicycle and pedestrian amenities would you like? Also the spell down. And then there's some basic building standards for aesthetics, nothing fancy. You get to opine on massing scale, consistency of materials, colors, things of that sort. Utilities, you know, basically follow the rules. And then the last one I think is fiscal impact. Not that you would make a decision based on fiscal impact, but in some circumstances, you might want to know what the project was going to mean cost benefit wise. Cost benefit wise. What kind of municipal services would have to be spent? What kind of tax benefit would it yield? Kind of jobs would it create?
And I think what, what hasn't been said explicitly was, it was given at the beginning, these are standards, they're not requirements. So this is all directory in nature.
It is, it's all, but if you keep going down, oh, you've got already six, three, eleven waiver.
Right. And so that's where it, it's designed to be the starting point for discussion. The special permit granting authority, which would typically be either the planning board or zoning board of appeals, would have the ability to make exceptions as may be appropriate for any given project. Is that a fair?
Also, the same measure of flexibility to the parking standards and the sign standards. Because I've seen a lot of cases over the years where your table of parking spaces results in way too much parking. So somebody can ask for a special permit to reduce that. It's in everybody's interest to say yes.
This, what is nice about this, and it's new to the zoning piece, is that this actually would allow for people who are contemplating building, doing building in the town. That things that need to be considered, things such as noise, things such as light. So it gives them the concepts of, oh, there is going to be questions likely about not just parking, which anyone who has done anything in town will know, parking is going to come up. Traffic impact is going to come up. But there are questions about things such as lighting, sound, the impact on the community, potentially fiscal impact. So that way it's setting that, those expectations up, especially as the develop, business development is trying to bring in new entities. It's setting them up for success rather than trying to put them into a gotcha moment. Is that a fair characterization?
Yeah, I, I think. When I gave it to the board, said treat this as a sushi menu. If you don't like it, just don't order. And I got, I got enough of a response that I could put together a modified version. There are some performance standards, if you go back up to the top of six point three, like Smithsonian level performance standards from the early days of the bylaw. That keep going, wait, stall strikeout. Yeah, here we go. Okay, so all of this is what's in the bylaw today. Open storage of junk. If you're abusing equipment that causes a nuisance. So this is, that's the early version of what I've done.
Yeah, I think in general, looking through here, I think what we need to do on the planning board is to see if there's any redundancy with our subdivision rules and regs or any of those other
Yeah.
Things that we have that are not zoning.
Yeah.
Or, you know, managed in a different manner. To make sure there isn't any overlap with what we're promulgating via that mechanism.
When I did Medford, I had the great good fortune of doing it in a city that had traffic engineers on staff. So they, the traffic section was vetted by them not that long ago, two or three years ago. So I'm confident of that. You may have other bylaws that state other standards. For example, it's not uncommon for me to encounter noise regulations that say no decibel readings will exceed 70 dBA. Well, that doesn't mean anything because it's all in context. You know, it's 10 dBA above ambient at the nearest occupied property line. So that's the state standard. And the only other thing I think that would qualify as major would be senior housing.
Which we've already discussed.
Yeah.
Attorney McGreal, is there anything that, since you've been a part of, of this process in, in your personal capacity? Anything that strikes you that we haven't discussed here is a significant change? Because you've been a proponent for.
Before he, before he answers, Brian, I did go back to the earlier versions of site plan review where the planning board gets it. If it doesn't require a special permit and it goes to the board of appeals, if it does require a special permit.
No, I, I just think on the performance standards, I think you need to look at them very closely. I know a lot of towns have opted Mark not to have them. For example, you did Linfield, Linfield does not have them.
Yeah.
And they opted not to have them for, for specific reasons that I've talked to council over there why they didn't want them. They thought they would hurt the town and, and limit the town and kind of box the town in that people come in and say, hey, I've met all of these standards. You know, so you've really kind of laid out a playbook for me to get my project approved. So I think it can be a double edged sword. And I just think the town should think long and hard before committing to do them.
Well, that's why.
That's just my person, that's my personal thought, but you know, I don't have a say in this except for a town meeting vote, but certainly the planning board does. And with their input, I'm sure they're going to want to look at the, I just suggest you look at them very closely as I'm sure the planning board will.
I completely agree.
And it looks like Sam has raised her hand, so I want to allow her opportunity.
Yeah, on this section, I also have two other comments that hopefully we'll, we'll have time for and want to be respectful of everyone's time tonight on different sections. But with this particular one, sometimes putting things, and I don't know to what extent things can be done in-house, but some of this might be better, again, kept in kind of what, what Jim was alluding to in the, the rules and regulations. Versus having it codified, because if anything does need to be changed, or they realize that every single time, whichever board is reviewing it, that one component of it is, is not something that works in the long run or in reality. Then you have to go back to town meeting to change things like this. And having these standards explicitly spelled out in code can sometimes be a little problematic. As from a, kind of the administration of regulatory side and having to deal with. I mean, as, as I was a historic preservation planner and a zoning overlay planner who dealt with form-based code. So just to give you my background of having to deal with things like this every single time we had to or wanted to amend something, having to go back before a city council. And that particular municipality was a nightmare. So again, I, we can compare it with the subdivision rules and regulations and the other boards can look at that, how it impacts them as well. But I would urge us just to think about how much of this needs to actually be codified.
That's a, that's a good comment. Lexington has reduced virtually everything in this genre to regulation. Which makes it easierish, same sense to deal with.
We're literally going through it right now with our subdivision rules and regs.
So the, the piece here, and I, I don't have a preference one way or the other, whether it should be regulatory or bylaw. Is the consistency across the, the various bodies that implement the standards. And that's where the only real advantage of having it in zoning is that it, it enforces some more of a need for consistency between the planning board, board of appeals and town council. Because you have three different boards that can get involved in projects here, or different types of projects. And if there's an inconsistency in the regulations, if a project moves or can really create venue shopping, which we don't really want to have people do based upon the regulations themselves. So as long as there's consistency or there's a direct reference, the, you know, the town council defers the planning board or appeal. It, I, it doesn't really strike me as problematic to have as regulations. Unless there's inconsistency between the board of appeals regulations, town council's regulations and the planning board's regulations. Because each board can implement its own regulation. So that, that's the, the piece here. And that's one of the pieces that is being proposed, why it's being proposed this way. And I, I hear what Sam's saying and I don't disagree with it because making changes at town meeting is inherently and necessarily difficult as opposed to having it in one place. And, and that may be something where the planning board, board of appeals want those decisions made by the town council because politically that's a safer place to have someone else make those decisions. Or they, there's some sort of division of that. That's, that's the comment I just want to throw out there in this section. But as to what they are, I think at a minimum, this is really good fodder for discussion. To make sure that we do some sort of performance standards so that the public and the boards can say, look, this is what we're trying to do. These considerations are actually being heard. And people can say, this is what we're measuring against. If there's going to be an exception, which can be granted, there's a reason behind it. And that way, that documentation and that rule setting becomes very clear.
I would say in in conclusion, that the only other major changes, having just looked, scrolled through the table of contents would be ten, seven and ten, eight, which is a Dover amendment. Site plan review provision. It only applies to B one, two and three in the use table, churches, schools and childcare centers. But it takes it out of the building inspector's hands and it puts it in front of the planning board for the first review, requiring a simple site plan review to move forward. And I think that's a whole lot better process than hanging, you know, so these can be very controversial projects. I think they should be reviewed by a board rather than an individual. The, if, if the building inspector, for example, says no, the next step is a trip to the ZBA. And you need a super majority vote of the ZBA in order to get out of Dodge. Whereas if it just goes to the planning board for site plan approval or to the ZBA, I believe that, that this is, no, the next section, Dan, the ten, eight. Then if, if any appeal would go directly to court. It would make a whole lot more sense for the applicant and for the town to handle it that way. It was not that long ago where there were three cases that said you couldn't subject a Dover protected use to site plan review. But then the good folks in Wayland subjected a Jewish cemetery to site plan review or religious use. And Judge Sands of the Land Court said, well, you're, this is site plan light. You're, you're not trying to bust them. You're trying to just make sure that they A, qualify and B, that you're, even this is an opportunity to impose the reasonable conditions the statute says you can impose. So based on that model, this is a site plan light. And then the other one is this request for reasonable accommodation. Too many times I've heard from municipalities that they kind of missed the ball on an application for a facility that you, you might call it a rehab facility for recovering drug and alcohol abusers. These are protected under three, if not four federal laws. And if you blow it, you're in trouble. So, and I mean civil rights violations. So again, better to send it over to a committee. You know, you've got able counsel, counsel can step in immediately. If it's just getting introduced into the building inspector's office, you might not have as clear a path. You really need to keep the path clear here or it's, it, it results in a trip to federal district court if you blow it.
I apologize, I'm not following. When you say when you blow it, what, what would be potentially being missed and that this is attempting to address?
So if, if I propose something in the order of a recovery center of America, which is, you know, a pretty large facility. It's, 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 it's both medically oriented and programmatically directed towards social changes. It's, it's a, let's face it, I mean, a lot of people would think of that as a NIMBY and they would put up a, a wall to it. There are, once, once the facility throws the federal card under the Fair Housing Act amendments of 1988 or the, the ADA or the Rehab Act, which precedes both of those laws, it ups the ante tremendously. And it, there are certain rules that the municipality must follow or they're going to end up being charged with discrimination. And discrimination under those statutes is a civil rights violation and it brings in 1983. And it brings in the 30s fees, it brings in costs, it brings in sanctions, it brings in compulsory orders as well. Seen all of that. So it's best to just dodge the bullet. I, I mean, I've seen local officials just say really outrageous things and you can't take it back once you do. So.
So what does this section do? So sorry.
So you're taking that out of the building inspector's hands and putting it towards a board.
The ZB.
Yeah.
So, so someone who is aggrieved by the building inspector could appeal to via this mechanism?
No, the, the HUD DOJ guidance documents for these kinds of lawsuits or, or applications say that if there's no specific person who's designated as the gatekeeper, you have, if, if there is, you go through the gate. If there's none, then you go through the normal path and the normal path is a building inspector. And I'm saying that's not a good path, a better path. And I don't know anything about your building inspector, I'm not trying to be pejorative to the building inspector. The better path is to get this to the town lawyer as quick as possible. And the best way to do that is through the CBA because you're probably going to end up having to hold a hearing. On, because, because somebody is proposing a facility which has land use impacts. And so the question becomes, can we reasonably accommodate those land use impacts and give them a path forward?
Basically saying that if anyone is requesting any facility that would be, that would be under the FHA. Then that would, instead of going to the building inspector, just goes right to the ZBKA.
And, you know, these cases don't usually end up in, there's three types of discrimination. There's, you know, intentional and factual, and then there's refusal to grant a reasonable accommodation. And most of the cases end up with reasonable accommodation requests.
Attorney McGreal?
Just real quick. And I apologize, Mark, because we've been through this a few times, so, but things just, you know, things just jump out at you. So I would assume FHA is the Federal Fair Housing Act?
Yeah.
So maybe at the beginning on the purpose, it should be like written out and then parentheses just to define it.
I think it's up there.
Is it up there? Maybe, maybe it's higher up. Well, it's probably higher up than I can't see it on the screen.
I think it's under, it may be under the definitions as well.
Yeah, just if it isn't, then ADA, same thing.
Yeah.
That's all.
And just along those lines to piggyback, when you reference ADA, it'd be ADA or ADAAA. Because there's the ADA, the additional act. Which is way too many As. And then I believe Samantha also had two other issues that you wanted to bring up as well.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to talk about this before I jump in with the. One is a small question and the other is a larger, a larger topic.
And any other topics on, on the FHA?
Okay, seeing that I will go ahead and ask my, my two questions. So one of them, let me get to the page. On four point three point three, which is the adjacent lots under special regulations. It was highlighted, yeah. Oop, you just had it. It's on page 12, if anybody has a printed out copy. There, so most of the sections in here include the Oxford comma. Some of these do and some of these don't. I think it'd be great if we could include it and be consistent. Because in here, just looking at this section, four point three point three, as well as just glancing down at four point, four point two, it's, it's used inconsistently. So it'd be great if we could use it so that it's clear. Yeah, sorry. But in adjacent lots, so in, in that particular section, the Oxford comma is not used. And then under item I.
Just, just to make it really clear.
This is really, no, no, you're, this is the brand new statute that came out in the governor's. This is really, no, no, you're, this is the brand new statute that came out in the Governor's August Housing Act.
The the issue that she's having is the Oxford comma.
Well, that's part of it.
I don't think I changed anything. I think because I copied it and pasted it.
Yeah, no, the the Oxford, so under here, there's actually a, so it says I conformed under four point three point three. I can deal with the Oxford comma component later, but it relates to this section as well as some of the others on the screen. But if you go under I, the small I, conformed to then existing requirement of area, area, and then there's a period. Is that supposed to be a comma?
Yes.
Okay. And then you added the Oxford comma there for or depth. So is it if it meets any of those or if it meets all of those? Or is this just exact language that you have to copy from the state and it's not particularly clear?
I can give you the document that I copied it out of.
Okay.
So I'll do that. I'll send it to you.
Okay, great. Yeah, because I just want to make sure if this, again, if this is something that comes up and somebody asks me, I want to have some clarity. And the other issue, which may be something to get into much later. When I was working remote, I had started working on putting together an update of the sign overlay because there's a huge issue that we're facing right now in the sign overlay area that there is no design review board. So people are literally just not getting signs at all. There is no default review entity. And now that there's a town planner, to be quite frank, the feedback from when I met with inspection, inspectional services and the building inspector, as well as the town administrator and and Aaron, who's the director of economic and community development, was that we could look at taking it out. I'm happy to share that language with you. Kind of use that as a starting point. Taken a long time to try to get some feedback, but having that additional board that, again, may exist but has not met for years and has been effectively disbanded by a lack of membership and lack of appointments is is causing a huge yes, the design review board for the sign, sorry, for this, for anybody who doesn't know.
If you can navigate to ten point two, ten point, ten point two?
Yeah, so the entire signage overlay has some some problematic things. Also, so that's, that's one thing to call it is the whole component of the the existence of the design review board is problematic because, again, it has not met for years. And so there's no signs getting approved downtown legally. They can't be per this existing code. And two, the other issue is that the way that it's written, it puts a lot of onus, a lot of work on both the applicant and the building inspector to do a calculation of every single sign anywhere on the property. There are much cleaner ways to calculate this. And again, I have a draft that I put together. I'm happy to of just of research I've done. I did not know about all of this other stuff going on when I had started working on all of that, but it's something that I really hope we can start the conversation on looking at. Because it again, it's it's creating a huge issue for businesses going in downtown.
Attorney McGrell?
No, I just wanted to thank the senior planner for raising this issue because it's a big issue and it needs to be resolved. And I think it would be a shame to recodify our bylaw and not address this and just look the other way because it's it's affecting, it is affecting businesses downtown. Clients of mine, they just can't get anything done. It calls for a design review board process and as Samantha said, we don't have one. So it really, it it's created some chaos. And it, if Samantha had, you know, and I think we talked, you know, the the bylaw review committee talked about this, Dan. And it was just too much for Mark to take on. It's not fair because nobody knows what what would be appropriate. But if if Samantha has a model that potentially could be plugged in as part of this recodification, now's the time to look at it.
Absolutely. This is an area that has been troublesome in multiple ways and something that the planning board should be should be made aware of. Is that we have two different components of the sign of sign bylaws. And it's not quite practical to collapse them together because there's differences, substantive differences between them. So what's used for the downtown areas, which is what's covered by the design review board, is more specific than the general sign bylaw and to apply that and reduce some of the aesthetic and other components would remove some of the reasons why this part, this process was put into place. And by the same token, these signs tend to be more costly and the and have higher requirements that probably aren't needed for the entire town. So to have this separate sign overlay, which is a whole element, there is some validity for and something that was determined as needed by the town and town meeting. However, the design review board itself doesn't exist. And so to have input as to how to reconcile the purpose and preserve the purpose of why we have this additional design so that the town can be improved in its signage. Definitely open to having that, especially if it makes it so that the either the body or party that is responsible for doing design review and the design view process has expertise in that. And it is not too onerous either on the town or the applicant. Because right now it's onerous on everyone to the point that no one wants, we don't have any members on the designer review board.
That a fair way of summarizing it?
Yeah, I I tried to collapse one into the other, then the other into the other. And the terminology is different. They're not the same sign definitions in the overlay district as there are in the under section six point two, which is the generic sign bylaw.
Fortunately, as I get older, I, you know, I have the history that a lot of people don't have because I lived through this. And the purpose of this bylaw was at one point downtown Wakefield, that area where this overlay pretty much encompasses, there was discussion that why don't, why don't our signs look like Melrose? It's the truth. I remember when this whole thing got put in. And what happened was under our old sign bylaw, people were allowed to take the old box lit up signs at downtown. And when a new business went in, they were just able to change the piece of glass and put a new cheap sign up. And so at one point, somebody said, we need to take control of this and we need to basically make it that whenever a new business comes in, they have to go through a design review process and gradually our signs downtown will become more like Melrose with gooseneck lighting, et cetera. To a certain extent, it's worked. It really has because you look at some of the the businesses that went through this, the Sabatino's, the Dollery, that whole block, the Sakura Public Kitchen, you know, those, those are, you know, I think a lot of people would say more tasteful signs. So I think, you know, so I would be careful not to just throw it out and just say, hey, go back to the old bylaw because then you you might not get what you we all want downtown. But there could be something in the middle.
Yeah, I I think that this sounds like a gigantic can of worms that we should maybe have outside of the recodification.
Well, I've kept them the way they are.
Through through the chair, respectfully, I have talked with the town administrator. I have talked with the building inspector. I have talked with the director of economic and community development and in my my own experience and opinion as as part of this professional opinion. And I would encourage us not to do that at this point. The, I I spent hours on and hours on doing research from other municipalities all around Massachusetts and trying to even double cross check some different things with other places throughout the country because of some of the terminology that was used in this.
Let me maybe maybe put it a different way. This is a larger conversation that opening up right now in this forum where no language in front of anyone and no prep from anyone feels like we're going to be talking around in circles. If there is a plethora of information that you've put together that can be provided to people in advance of trying to figure out what the best way to move forward on, that feels like a more productive conversation than trying to dredge up and start that conversation after we've gone through the table uses in as much detail as we have because it sounds like there's a lot there. So that would be my recommendation in terms of how we table it for now. Get the relevant information highlighted that this is something that probably needs to be addressed as part of the balance between now and when February, and then we can pick it up at the next planning, we can put it as one of the things in the next planning board meeting we can talk about.
Yeah, it it almost seems like more ZBA too. Also, so I I don't want to get it stuck in at this planning board meeting as we're reviewing. I understand the importance of it, but we're not going to be able to solve any of it tonight. So I, and I'm not saying that it shouldn't, we should just put it off. It's just this is not the appropriate time to deal with this.
I might suggest that you do it in two pieces, but it seems that the immediate problem is that. So I can probably help you devise an alternative path to get the overlay district signs in front of somebody that can do what Brian said needs to be done. But the overriding problem is that if you take the DOG and you make it townwide, it's too strict. And if you take the section six point two provisions and you make it effective townwide, that you won't get what you want downtown, which is better signs. So that's a, that's a big problem. That's the biggest problem.
Samantha?
Through the chair, all I was trying to say, I'm sorry if it felt like I was going on. I know we've all been here for quite some time now. What I was trying to get to earlier is that I'm happy to send that out and we can talk about it at the next meeting, schedule another joint meeting if need be. But at least I do have some language put together for a draft of this entire section redone for how to deal with the signage overlay. And at least it'll give us a place to to start that conversation from.
Okay. That seems like a very prudent and timely approach.
So I think what, just to kind of try to summarize, right? So I think we went through, there's a, I hope, besides myself, a number people have taken notes in terms of all the the individual changes we talked about at the the use tables. That's but there's a lot of very productive conversations. I I think what I'm hearing is that things that the planning board needs to make sure that we look at as a group are the section six point three for the performance standards to make sure that there's no overlap or redundancy with what we already have on the books or to agree that that's where how we how we want to manage through those performance standards or if we want to include them in the zoning. Make sure that we put our eyes on special attention on sections ten point eight for the Dover amendment, the site plan review light. Make sure that there's nothing in there that we see as a red flag. Section ten point nine, just kind of general awareness and make sure and probably a conversation with the ZBA to make sure that the accommodations for request for reasonable accommodations. If we're going to be routing it to you guys, make sure you're aware of something else we're putting on your plate. And then there's a whole series of conversations around signage that's again, probably some combination of planning board with ZBA to make sure that you, you know, we're not, again, just shoveling everything at you guys and saying, good luck.
Can I ask a question about the signage? Have we tried to hire? You know, tried to get that group of people back together? Is it just dissolved when Jim McBane left? Is that what happened? Jimmy McBane left and it just kind of disappeared? Sign review committee because that's when it all fell apart, right?
I can't speak to the history of that. I'm sorry I wasn't here. I just don't think anybody's appointed anymore.
The issue is there's no one appointed. So all of the terms expire.
So we haven't tried to appoint anybody?
I don't know whether it
Decided not to do it anymore?
I, yeah, I can't.
I mean, it seems like it was fine until still.
Yeah, just chiming in, I know it is getting late, but Barb, Bob Sardella was appointed to review the signage stuff and and I'm not aware if he's still doing that at the building department, but he had a desk in the office. So I know Jim McBane also did that design review board on a different scale. So as would go from the inspector's office to the ZBA, there was two different ways that it was being worked on and Bob was doing all the calculations. So I'm not sure if there's a position or if he's still doing that. But that's how it was working twenty nineteen.
Thought it was up until Jim McBane left because I remember him bringing a lot of the stuff from the sign review committee to us during some of our meetings and he would talk to his, you know.
Yeah, I agree with that, but I think in the inspector's office, Bob Sardella, Sardella Signs was had a desk and did work a few, I believe, a few days a week. Attorney McGrell, is that, was that something you remember?
Attorney McGrell is not in the meeting.
Okay, understood.
Does that seem like a fair summary of, you know, all the things that we as a board really need to put our eyes on and really make sure we, you know, review and our our targets and all as we go forward on this process?
Let me just circle back at the use table again once I prepare another.
Okay. Excellent. I think it's safe to say this has been an incredibly productive meeting with a lot of assistance from all parties, both people remotely as well as in person. So much thanks. The products that we're coming out with is definitely going to be improved. It's going to, again, come back before the planning board. As there's input in meantime, please, by all means, if we can set up additional joint meetings as may be appropriate. And we're going to have other meetings and all of our meetings are posted. As we get additional drafts, feel free to look at bylaw review committee's website and I can certainly send out notices when there are new drafts. Just to, so that people have awareness of that. And all feedback that is related to language was when it comes back through the official website. I actually wind up going ahead and forwarding that off to Attorney Bob Barowski so that he can put eyes on to it and then it gets discussed in the bylaw review committee meetings as well. So that that's what happens with feedback. It's it is encouraged and welcomed by all members of the planning boards, ZBA, other boards and members of the public. So if anyone who's watching this after the fact has survived for three and a half hours, much appreciated and congratulations.
Echo that.
Thank you.
You're great to sit us along through this. It's great.
With that, I think you have one vote remaining to be taken for the planning board.
Yep. So so that closes item number three for us. And then we've got item four, items not anticipated by the chair.
Hope is that, yeah.
There's not a lot more. We went through a lot today.
The only thing, we have some some items on our website that are of date, need to be cleaned up. So should definitely think about that. I know we still need to have the plans posted for the Salem Street subdivision because that's not really available for the public to view. So.
If there's anything that you're aware of through the chair, if there's anything that you're aware of that needs to be updated in particular, please feel free to just email me if you see it.
Okay.
We don't have to get into the weeds of it at this hour. But if you can email it to me, what you know is missing or what you know needs to be updated or any comments you have on it. Trying to juggle with creating a whole new, literally a whole new webpage for the planning department since it's a separate department now on top of doing everything else. So I I have no desire to forget things, but I'm not always up to date. And just as a quick side note, I just emailed everybody a copy of the draft bylaw signage stuff I had done. So you have that in your inbox.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, Matt? Do you?
Yeah, just, just to shout out, the housing production plan survey is due December sixteenth. So I hope everybody has a chance to fill it out and email it to your friends and neighbors and pastors by and, you know, people you see on the street. So I don't know, Sam, if you have any, anything else to say by way of rah rah?
No, just continue to get the word out. I'm happy to hand out physical copies if anybody wants to go like door knocking effectively or whatever you want to call it. But yeah, we have copies at all of the municipal buildings, the civic center, the library, the senior center and town hall. So please do help us get So please do help us get the word out because we have just about a week left to get responses.
And Bill, anything from you?
No, I'm not going to bring up the, the flex post on the north half for the bike lane.
Okay, so Sam, anything, items not anticipated?
Uh, nothing emergent right now. We can talk about stuff at the next meeting.
And then as a reminder for members of planning board, our next meeting is January 14th, 2025. So happy New Year's to everyone instead of having the Christmas Eve meeting. And, and with that being said, I am number five adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, so motion by, to adjourn, but by Matt, seconded by Kevin. Theo?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So thank you, everyone. And we are adjourned.